Seven o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you hear us, Dan? Oh, he did. Okay. All right. Um, we have one addition to our... two additions?
Well, you have to approve your agenda.
Okay. Next on our agenda is... yeah, we have, I guess there's... Yes. Um, what is your addition?
Under old business, I want to bring up the fact...
All right, you can't hear? All right. We're doing the...
How can we...
You can't hear anything? Hang on. Maybe the audio... All right. All right, see if our audio's on. Yeah, we can hear you. Is our audio on?
Yeah, our audio's on.
Yeah.
Yeah? I don't know why you can't...
Maybe we've got it.
Can't hear us all. All right, hang on. Yes! Yeah.
I know in 20 years they'll have a hall break.
Can you hear me now?
Put my hand right through them.
Maybe try... Okay. Do we need to put our volume up?
No, our volume is on.
Maybe we should shut the air off, because that can be too loud.
Yeah.
Okay. And our volume is all the way up. All right, you know what? I'm going to keep you close to me and I'll repeat what everybody says.
Okay, if you're willing.
I'm willing, okay? Okay, go ahead. Ms. Colleen, what is your addition? Under all business...
Under all business, I would like to revisit the letter of April 29th, 2020 from Seibert and Delasky having to do with the marijuana ordinances in this township.
All right, we're going to revisit the, uh... Under all business, a letter from Seibert and Delasky about the marijuana...
Medical marijuana.
Medical marijuana. All right, so...
Deliver to all of us.
So there would be to be medical marijuana. Okay, and then under new business, it'll be fireworks ordinance.
Okay, if there's no other additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll support. Okay, hold on.
Move and supported, all in favor. Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, bye-byes. Um, any nays? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is to approve our minutes of Tuesday, May 12th.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from May 12th.
I'll support that.
Move by, um...
Anderson.
Anderson, supported by Stevens. All in favor? Okay, and Goldston abstains because he wasn't there. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four ayes, one abstention, motion carries. Um, next is a financial report read by our treasurer.
We began the month $458,403.79. We took in receipts of $89,456.3 and we made disbursements in the amount of $19,871.72, bringing us to an ending balance in the general fund of $527,988.16.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report submitted.
I'll support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve financial report, all in favor?
Aye.
It's already supported? You mean aye?
I vote yes.
Yeah, okay. Bye-byes, no nays, motion carries. And one aye. Well, he meant aye.
I know.
Look, we're not going to... Yeah.
He's out of practice.
All right. Next word, next on the agenda is our correspondence. Okay? All right. Which is the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce elected official breakfast. Uh, it was rescheduled for June 19th and has been canceled. Okay? Yes? How's that? Thank you. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, agenda is the IRA fire department calls for May. They're in front of you. Um, the total was five. Okay. The next thing on the agenda... Agenda, okay, is, um, a clerk wants to bring you up to date on the elections. Okay, I'll turn it over to her and I'll kind of slide out of the way.
All right, I just figured I'd give an update on... Okay. Hi, I figured I'd give an update on the election. Um, first of all, we have a lot of absentee ballot applications coming back from the Secretary of State that they sent out to everybody. A lot of those people are choosing to be permanent absentee, um, people. So I just wanted to tell you about that. We've gotten about maybe 150 of those back, which is a substantial number. Um, the Bureau of Elections is going to be providing some type of personal protection equipment for us for the election. They don't know yet what. I don't think we will know until it gets closer to the election. Probably hand sanitizer, um, gloves, masks, some type of... Something to put up where the people come in and to protect the election winners. I did, uh, call quite a few people today to see if they would be able to work the election and I think I have eight people. So they should be pretty good... I may need a couple more, but I'm, you know, I'm happy about that. Um, we're going to have to, um, change the way the voting booths are set up, so they're going to be six feet apart, whereas before they were closer together. So there'll be less area for people to vote, so there'll probably be longer lines. We're going to have to put axes on the floor with tape so people know where to stand and, you know, outside or whatever. Um, so it's, it's going to be different, but at least we're still able to come and vote if we so choose to do so. So that's about it. I think probably I'll just, until the election, just update you guys.
With this, is there a chance of using downstairs? Or is that still crowded?
No. He wanted to know if we could use the downstairs for, um, one of the precincts, it's too crowded. That's all I got.
Okay. Okay.
Is it possible for us to provide masks? If you like them, just search for masks.
Okay.
You, you have to, you, uh, election workers. Got people, but I, I would think that when we want the masks more, like any kind of voters, because in protection, a bomb would come.
Yeah, we could just put on there that they could, you know, the sign up or whatever that if they have their own to bring it or whatever. Um, let me add to that, too. I did talk to, um, Bob Warren, who has some, um, of the PPE stuff that he's willing to sell us at cost. And I told him I wasn't served because the election bureau is going to pay for most of it. But I don't know if that's something that we want to maybe get to the office, like, uh, you know, he's got those big things that hand sanitizer.
Put a good notice on our website. Because I think it's really important, mostly all for you.
Yeah.
For all the people that are going to be in the office during the election.
Right.
I'm sure... I'm also sure that the, we're, the election people are already looking into that and probably will have masks. And I think people coming in will bring their own mask.
Right.
If you allow me to prove it, they will not wear a mask.
Right.
They look right at you and say, "This is America."
You know...
I have mine here.
I have mine, too, but I have...
I laughed, there was a hardware store. They were having a box of Conso's. She, "This tells us we don't have to," but that's wrong. The 1910th Amendment gives the state the authority, police authority, to regulate.
Um, so let me just real quick, um, get back to Bob Warren. He did give me some prices. Um, he has gloves, there's 50 pair in a box and it's $25 a box. I just bought some at Sam's Club or at home and it was two boxes. I'm not sure how many was in there, but I want to say it was like $17. So I don't know if that's comparable. Um, he does have, he thinks a box of the disposable masks, 100 of them, is $40. Um, and the hand sanitizer, it's the big thing that we have on the desk over there, is $20 a bottle. And he also has a thermometer that you can use for the forehead for $75. So if that's something we want to do, then, you know...
And you would use the thermometer on people coming through? And if they have a temperature, you're not allowing them to vote? You will allow them to vote absentee?
Yep. And I mean, even just for people coming in, not even just for the election, but people coming in, you know, now, whenever we open up, we can have a sign on the door, you know, we can make something up that says, you know, if you have a temperature and, you know...
Well, they do that everywhere I go.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the bond fees for all temporary uses. Um, do we want to maybe hear from Mr. Roland on this?
What was the question?
On the temporary uses, you know, those, um, the bond fees. The bond fee of bringing in, uh...
Oh, for storage?
For storage, yeah.
Well, I think the ordinance will agree. I really don't have in front of me. What was it, $7,500?
Yeah, $7,500.
Temporary mobile home was $3,500 and all other temporary uses were $7,500.
Right, right. But on the storage situation like that, you know, if we gave them six months at $3,500 bond, something like that would be a better deal all the way around. $7,500 bucks is a lot of money to put out for storage if you spend $200,000 trying to help.
Yeah, I agree.
But here's the thing, we've got some control there. You know, we can hold the, the CMO until that thing's done or whatever.
You can't hear Roland talking about the bond. I'll probably have to repeat that.
But that, I mean, something like that amount would be more palatable than...
It will, and we have, we have the final hand in the CMO.
Right, right.
And that's really all we need.
You know, usually they can't get the final draw unless they got the CMO.
Yeah.
And, uh, not only it keeps them out, it also...
Um, I'm sorry, Roland, where it says all other temporary uses, $3,500, so that's $7,500.
Yeah, $7,500, that's exorbitant.
No, I agree.
I don't even know where that came from.
If I can just let you know, the ordinance does allow for one six-month allowance with two six-month extensions at the building officials discretion. So they would have, if needed, up to 18, 18 months.
But it's got Roland's discretion.
At Roland's discretion, yes.
Okay, um, is that the only... Anyone else have any comments on any of these?
No, that was all that we were, um...
Okay, let me summarize, he didn't hear. Okay. Um, Roland said, I'm going to take this off so I can keep it in the face, sorry. Roland, Roland said... Roland said that $7,500 was too much money. He said that he thinks that the $3,500 would be plenty enough money to charge them. He also says that we also have, because they are building a house, he has kind of a control over them with having the CMO. Um, they can't get their last draw until they get the C of, uh, C of all. You know, so... Right, so that's his look on it, that $3,500 is a good price, right, Roland?
Yeah, there, you know, on, on these other things that I don't know what Bill had, whether it was for commercial or what, but, uh, uh, also, I don't know, you probably know something about the, Colleen, uh, revocable letter credit or something for that kind of money or whatever. I mean, maybe that would work, I don't know.
Yeah. I just, I, I think the $3,500 and the amount of time that we give them, the control we have with the CBO is...
Right.
That is, if, you know...
They're all agreeing to that.
We could revisit it if we really have a problem.
Right.
But if we really have a problem, we can fall back on the courts.
Right, okay.
Right.
Not, not everybody gets those stories due in there.
No, no.
It's kind of a...
This is the first one. Yeah. Yeah, for a long time.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the township, Casper Township, piece schedule with the only changes under all other temporary uses change from $7,500 to $3,500.
Support.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Stevens to approve, to change only the temporary use of, of the...
Storage unit?
Storage units from $7,500 down to $3,500. Um, is supported by Stover. Well...
It's already done.
It's already done. Why Stover, huh? Yeah, I would say we do, we're going to do roll call vote on that.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Dan?
Roll call vote. Yes? Roll call, yes. Yes.
Yes for Dan?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
I don't know what we're going to do without that one aye.
Okay, now...
Peace without British rule. I think the miracle.
Okay.
Colleen, do you have a copy of that letter?
I, I thought I gave, I gave you one.
Copy of the letter?
Delasky? Oh, I am, I am, sorry, Jennifer, I...
Thank you.
I don't know, you probably don't have the letter from Delasky and them...
I emailed to be done when you got it. We all had the letter two months ago.
Mm-hmm.
But I gave the letter to everybody in the office and emailed Danny. No worries.
We got a medical marijuana.
So...
Okay. I'm not going to read it all.
It was sent to us two months ago in our packets. So we've had it in our possession for two months without taking any action on this or acknowledging it.
Right.
And that's why I'm bringing it back to the board for some sort of acknowledgement.
No, I, do you want to squarehead on it?
I beg your pardon?
You...
No, no, I, I'm curious. I, I'm just curious why we...
I mean, there was a lot of loophole, I mean, a lot of... The medical marijuana thing was wide open. It was very little, if an applicant come, they said they're a caregiver, they could set up shop going medical marijuana. You know, there was no, I mean, some townships required, um, have people show, "Hey, I'm a licensed caregiver." Technically, they don't have to show you. They do not have to show you. And, um, well, the states make a lot of money from these licenses. Well, now this came across, giving township more leverage to regulate. We could tell, we could tell it can be used in certain zones.
And that, that is my, um... That is my only complaint, is that the state of Michigan has usurped our zoning by saying, "This can go anywhere at all."
It's the Wild West.
And that, we, we've spent years constructing our zoning to protect our, the neighbors, the neighborhoods, so they know what to expect.
I, I called, yeah, I called up, I'm sorry.
And, um, so, so, but that's, that's my beef with the state of Michigan.
Right.
With the medical marijuana, uh, facilities, my only, well, not my only, but my main concern is that at least our mechanical inspector has a say in the amperage that is, that goes to these buildings. There is a lot of heating, there is a lot of cooling, which means there's a lot of electricity. I want to make sure for the surrounding neighbors' sake that, that this is, this is done correctly and with a permit, if that's required, so that this amount of electricity and, and manufacturing kind of electricity boxes are safe. Um, because I don't believe we've, um, encouraged any setbacks or they've, or people have bought, um, existing buildings that are right near property lines. Um, I just want to make sure that what's, it's safe.
Right. We're, um, now we're, I was chatting with a attorney from NTA yesterday. She was saying, they, you know, basically these caregivers, you know, like, you know, they built the land scene, they get the slices and...
So anybody can say they're a caregiver very much?
Well, the state's making money on the license.
Oh, yeah, they are, because on, um, one of the websites I have to go to to pay taxes for payroll, they have two new boxes for medical marijuana, um, sales, you know, tax and...
Yeah, you know, a lot of money is going there. No money will be coming to the...
We contacted Chris Anderson this morning and she goes, well, there, I says, well, can we have applicants prove, here's my license, I'm a licensed carrier? She goes, well, you know, you can't, it, it hasn't been yet that to find the court, but yet this now, she was saying, it gives us thing where we could regulate where it happens.
Well, we want to make sure, number one, that they own the property, that they're pulling this, uh, this electricity into, um...
We do have that.
We, we just need, I think, um, a series of events, just like everything else.
Right, well, this now gives us direction. I mean, planning commission meets again.
Yes.
We can correct our...
And that's what I, that's what I would like to see. And in, in the future, I would love an executive session between whoever wants to come with on the planning commission and Chris and Kelly, who is the maintenance, not maintenance, that's not a word.
Electrical?
Electrical, the inspector. I want us all to be on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you would have to see...
Colleen, you can't have an executive session right now.
Yeah, a combined meeting between the four...
All right, then a combined meeting.
Yeah.
I don't care what it is, but I want all of us on the same page at the same time, and right now we are not.
Right.
And Brenda is getting numerous phone calls a week.
Yeah.
I probably handed out in the course of the shutdown, five or six more application packets. And we do have a new scenario that...
Which we haven't...
We'll confront it with, that Abby will discuss with you at some point in time.
Right.
But we haven't had yet.
Do you guys not know that we do have things in, in... That they do have to go through? They have to prove they own the property. They have steps they have to follow. They have to have steps that they have to follow for the electric, for the plumbing, for the, for the heat. We have all that in place already. We already have that in place.
You approve that.
Bill did that, we already approved that. I understand what more and I will talk to Colleen.
What about zoning?
Well, yeah, this... This what gives us...
This is... That's what I, that's what I...
Right, it gives us the ability to place in certain zones.
What you're saying, Joe, is that she goes through the planning commission?
Yeah.
Well, right here it says that, maybe I'm misunderstanding it. I'll talk to Christine again. I'm misunderstanding what I'm reading. Maybe you're seeing it a different way and I'm seeing it a different way.
Well, what I, what I understood, and I have no legal mind at all, is that the township may have the option to define it under home occupation.
The zoning that we have no...
But a home occupation has some sort... Would say that you have a home on the property. That's it, and this other scenario that would be...
They want to brought it where... They want to put it in a real and a...
There's a couple things, you could do home occupation where that you, it's done in your home.
Right.
You can't have people come onsite to work there. Two, it only...
Roland is talking about, we're talking about growing the medical marijuana in the facility.
Yeah, well, that...
But right now, what we're seeing is people who just want to buy a plot of land
Yeah.
and put up something
Right.
in the middle of a neighborhood that's zoned agricultural and residential. And I want to see that the neighborhood is protected.
Like maybe put it in a just...
What, what Joey's telling me is, um, medical marijuana is allowed to be grown in your home.
Yes.
Right.
We're, but we're, but we're having it grown in barns with no home.
Well, okay, let's, let's look at that. Number one, the person built that farm and should not have been given the right to build that farm, but somebody gave him the okay to go ahead and build that farm where he built it. That's pass. The person sold it to him, so he's allowed to do that. That's pass. Somebody else, some, and that's why we don't want farms built without plumes. That's why they should be accessory, because that's beside the point. It's on Lindsay Road, but that's only one. Most of the ones are in houses.
There's houses on the property. It's like, oh, but... The person who owns the property, they don't live in castle.
It's vacant house.
They're vacant houses.
Right. It's on Lindsay Road, but, but that's beside the point. People...
So this will be...
And well, it's...
So this is everything that the planning commission has to... That's good.
Right.
That's good, that's a good start. So, and work with Chris, uh, Chris...
Yes.
Um, to see, because maybe the township has certain zoning rights that will be protected.
Right.
And that's one of the things that I'm most interested in.
Yes, yeah. Keith and I talked, chatted with Chris today. And she was saying, yeah, you now with this, a pretty important ruling, we, lover, we could say we want industrial district endorsed. We could say we want industrial district endorsed.
Which you're not tonight, you don't have the right to do it.
It's just like where it needs to go.
That's perfectly all right.
It just needs to go in a certain...
And what, the lady from MTA?
Right.
Twelve. This is not, I'm trying to explain.
Yeah.
I don't want to limit the ability. I want to address the zoning.
Right, where it's located.
Well, the zoning, see, I agree with you on that part, but some people don't have to tell, they don't have to tell us they're growing medical marijuana. They can just go ahead and grow it.
Yeah, that's, well, that's the one thing later.
Right.
Yeah, the attorney at the MTA...
Of course, they would know.
I don't care about that.
What? They, they can hear you, believe me. They heard you. They can hear you. Um, they're hearing your comments. But they want to look at this and if this will make them feel better about it and Christine can look into it, I'm willing for you to go ahead and check it all out.
Right, okay.
And then it's fine.
I'd like to ask, why, would, why, why would we want, or whether anyone would want to get down on the ability of someone to grow marijuana in their house under the current laws and conditions?
We're not talking about that.
What they're talking about, they're, they're talking about people trying to just...
They buy vacant?
Buy the house and it's got a...
Buying vacant houses and growing it in poebarns and stuff like that. They're, they're willing...
Not being a part of the community.
Being part of our community and living in our community.
Not watching that poebarn 24 hours a day and protecting the neighborhood.
And being part of our community, that's what they're against.
Against the zoning habits.
Right, absolutely. And that's what they're upset. Right, and that's their concern. Okay, and that's what they want to handle.
Patty, there's five in the, people in the, that do not live in the township right now.
We have five of them in our township that are like that.
They don't live here though.
They don't live here, but they have medical marijuana growing. Yeah, they're caregivers and they have followed our procedure that we have, but... Again, they're following all the rules, but again, they don't live in our township and they're just using abandoned houses, not an abandoned, but, you know, they don't live in the houses that are there.
Does the law require that people are residents?
No.
No, but our zoning requires, then we might not be able to do anything about it.
Then we can do, Joe, Joe, I mean, and they know that, but they just want us to, Christine, to look into this for us. Just look at all ramifications, okay? And that's the main thing.
I worry about the house that is inhabited next to the barn that is not inhabited.
And not, not, yeah.
Not yet, but they don't want them to cause any problem.
Oh, oh, I...
No, twelve.
No, that's...
No, it'd be seventy-two. Now, that's not the part. I think it's, you know, if the houses get run down, they're not taken care of, that...
There's a fire in the middle of the night, there's nobody there because they had 600 amps of electricity going through that building.
And the house next door.
And the house is right next door.
Yeah, well... Okay. I, I think I'm, I think I'm just gonna bring this to an end.
Yeah.
And we'll just go and check it all out and we'll go on to the next.
Just a final thing, um, the, the attorney for the MTA says, this isn't unique to your township.
Oh, no.
Across, especially southern Michigan.
So there should be some precedent set of what we can do to protect our zoning and to protect the residents who live here.
So, um...
Patty, you want to mention a new scenario that we've come up with?
Yeah, okay. Really, I really don't want to, but I guess I... We have a new scenario, lady has called and I have talked to her. She has a 20-foot fence on property and has gone, how far around, I have...
I'm not sure.
Twenty-foot fence and she's got it locked down and she wants to grow medical marijuana. Yeah, but she's not inside of a building. She just wants to fence it in and grow it.
So what's gonna stop someone from popping over the fence at night?
I don't know, but I'm not going over 20-foot fence, I'll tell you that.
Well, no, we wouldn't do that, but, you know.
Somebody will.
And you're gonna get, yeah, I don't know, I have a...
Seventy-two plants.
And I told the lady that right now I couldn't pull up a property, um, card on it and our computers are down, it'll take me a while, I need to talk to my planner.
Probably want her growing it outside.
Yes, as far as I know, not, not medical marijuana that I know of. Oh, you've heard that too? All right. Well, I'm gonna, I have to...
Well, the next...
That's another thing I have to check it.
The next planning commission meeting.
Well, actually you can grow recreational, five plants, 10 plants if you want.
Sure you can.
But...
You can do that for years. People have.
Right, that's true. Okay, let's move on.
The next planning commission meeting, Steve, our planner, will be here, but we'll ask that Chris will be here.
That would be nice.
And give us some direction and give...
And I think I'll, I just, I just want to find out what the precedent is across the state.
Yeah.
And what exemptions there are.
That'll be July, right?
What's that?
Because you're not doing one in July.
Okay.
Well, I'll address that.
Not, oh, yeah, okay. Okay.
That would be fine.
Let's move on. Next up is approve, you're the supervisor, and also a cost of a monitor. Cost of the monitor will be $539 and for a monitor, $200 or less. I've looked them up online.
Yeah, Kobe is knows that.
I'll, I'll support that. I'll support that.
Yes, thank you.
Bill was the last, the old fashioned.
I know, right? Okay, oh, hang on. I know, I know. Yeah, we're, you're gonna have them. Okay, let me put that, supported by... Right, this will be a roll call vote.
Just enough left to be dangerous.
Roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes? Patty?
Yes, Dan, roll call vote. All right, he said yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay. On to the next thing. Our MTA dues.
What do we get for $3,133.47?
We call them all the time.
Plus I enjoy that magazine, that'll be quite a bit of...
Yeah. Yes, they are. Yeah.
And they do have, uh, this, if you look at it, you can add, um, access.
You know, I don't think it would ever for me to go first. I, I might, me and her might go.
And also too...
We invented a convention for years, we haven't sent the money to go.
Yeah, I've been, I've gone so...
Right, well, he's suggesting that the supervisor should go maybe, or what?
Well, they also, they also, like, I've been to quite a few of them, they have got day-long sessions online, so they're pretty good.
Yeah.
We went to one last summer, it was overnight, it was a two-day, it was very informative.
Yeah, we learned a lot, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, um, pay our annual dues to the Michigan Township Association for a cost of $3,133.47.
I'll support.
And also the MTA, they also backed us up in landscaping and township. That's the main function. They're a political agency.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson.
Can I, hold on, we don't want to add anything else into it. You can add unlimited online learning subscription if you look under the dues.
I know, I've looked at that. I, I truly didn't know if that was a good deal or not.
I don't either.
Uh, so I figured if you want to go, we'll just pay us a bill.
Okay, and there's a free trial until July 1st, so we can go onto MTA and they, I'm sure there's a spot for online learning and we can probably...
Try it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think any one of us.
Any one of us.
All of the board.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, well, I think...
It's outlined in the, in the magazines every month.
In the magazine, look at it, that you get. Okay. Uh, supported and, motion is supported, um, there's a roll call.
Joe?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes?
Yes, and he already said...
Dan, yes? Kelly?
Okay. Up to C. Motion carries. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
I've been sad all day today, but that way, that's why I'm a little tired. Two little toddlers. Come on, come with me. Anyway, um, motion, approve hiring of Ashley Anderson for election assistant.
Now, are you, does she have something you like to do or...
I actually do enjoy it.
Okay, you know, our, this clerk, she's pretty tough, so...
I know, she's really hard on me.
Yeah, she is, actually. She works her hard.
Well, I make a motion to, um, hire Ashley Anderson at $15 a hour.
Can I, okay, can I add something up real quick though?
What?
I just want to say I did call Catherine from MTA Legal, see, I was using our MTA.
Right.
Just to make sure, because she's my daughter, that there was no, and she said it's fine. The board votes on it and it's fine.
Okay, another roll call vote.
And she did say I can vote, I don't have to abstain.
Oh, really?
She did.
I always abstain with my brother for...
I don't know if he's there or not.
Okay.
You have to come to your brother.
Yeah.
Okay, so roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes?
Patty, yes.
Dan? Kelly?
Yes.
Very impressive.
Yes, it's our beginning, it's our beginning pay. Okay. Gee. Mo, motion carries. I'm getting the hang of this in another year or so after I'm being... Thank God. All right. Yeah, I know, thank goodness. Thank one goodness, I've been here a while. Next on the agenda is to approve keeping, well, now I'm supervisor, but keeping my name on the credit card that we have had.
Why? Supervisors don't have them.
No, but other supervisors have had their name on credit cards and I...
Not here. Not here, Karen never did.
No, but I just think it would be a...
And it's not practical to work with internal controls and financial institutions. And I would rather not see us exacerbate that problem than just...
Okay. All right, then somebody else needs to put their name on it. Not on the debit, but on the credit card.
The thing is, it's her, her social security number and it's, it's hooked up, it's on her.
Before you had, was it Darlene's name?
No. I know. Because you're gonna need a credit card. So somebody else stick it.
There's other people's examining cards?
No, no. Nobody wanted their name on it.
I'll put my name on it.
Okay.
I mean, the credit card, only one person's name on it or...
Yeah.
Multiple people's?
No. They don't want my name on it.
Clerk's name goes on it.
Yeah. No, no, it is.
No, the way, what Colleen says, clerk pays the bills.
I do pay them on time, too.
You do a good job.
That, that doesn't go into play. Because whatever you charge, you have to go before the board. You put a certain amount. No, not unless, not unless I've bought, you know, like... I, yeah, except for like Linda Stamps or, you know...
Do you think each office has, what, a $250 limit?
No. No office has any of that.
Jennifer does. Jennifer does.
She spent $250 without board of directors, yeah.
No, she has a $500.
Okay, well, there you go.
Only clerk has a $500.
That's it.
Who knew?
Nadira's gonna be coming to me.
I am, right.
Tomorrow, right?
No.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to move, um, the name on the township credit card from, from Jennifer
Right.
to the township clerk.
Support, yes, I'm sorry.
Questions? Stevens, who's supportive of that?
I do.
Okay, it was motion by Stevens, supported by Colleen, to move the credit card to, what's her name? Jennifer Anderson.
To the clerk, we should not put it in the name, we should put it with our office.
You can't. They won't do that. They have to...
No, I mean, in our, in our bylaws, it stays with the clerk. No, I mean, in our, in our bylaws, it stays with the clerk's office, whoever the clerk is, is the credit card.
You mean?
Whoever the clerk is, in, in the township, which is the clerk.
Put it in the clerk's name.
Yes.
To clerk.
Does that need to be a roll call?
No. Clerk's name, okay, I see what you're saying.
You take your name off of it and put it off the.
Okay, a motion by Stevens to re- remove the supervisor's name to put the clerk's name on the credit card. Okay? And Colleen said that, that it should stay, that it should say that. That it should stay with the office of the clerk. And that, well, yes.
Yeah, I know, I modified my, my motion to include Stevens' clerk's office.
Right, except for day-to-day stuff, you know, we can't be calling when they, you know, they're. Well, when they, they need to do assessment stamps, I, you know, we just go ahead and you approve it at the board meeting. Okay? Next way we. That's how we, that's how we approve it.
Always.
Always. Yes, alright? Okay. Okay?
Do we vote?
No, I need to vote.
Oh. The only thing, that's how it was gonna buy my monitor, well, so, I don't know how we're gonna do that. Um, let's see. Motion, but, oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, bye-byes, no names, motion carries. Here what? No. Yeah, no, he can hear you.
So you can buy your monitor tomorrow.
Okay.
Let's say, we give this a grace period until.
It's moved over to.
Well, yeah, cause I'll have, we'll have to call and.
Yeah, as you all got.
Alright.
So, so buy your monitor tomorrow with the credit card that is in your name, and then, two days later, call and.
Handle it, or whatever, you mentioned.
So, do I need to? We have a grace period, okay?
So how am I gonna handle this, the motion's already made, here, transferred over, so, are we gonna reset the motion?
No, no, just leave it and we'll handle it, it'll be fine, it'll be fine.
I, 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 I mean, you all are here, you all remember what happened. Yes, it will all be taken care of with the grace period, transferred over, I believe.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna do it?
Which makes sense.
Yes, so I'm talking.
Right. Okay. Alright, next on the agenda is for our planning commission to work on, and I think you're here for fireworks ordinance, which you have been having problems with.
This is your Mrs. Smart. That starts, well, year-round, they're out there like fireworks, even in the middle of winter.
I did see it in.
Two, three o'clock in the morning, boom, 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 my dogs just go crazy.
Aw, you poor dog.
And I've been complaining and complaining, nothing's worked, so, and I talked to the state police that were out a couple weeks ago about somebody shooting, and they stopped and talked to me, and they told me, there's been an ordinance for years, that you cannot have fireworks, only the day before, before the July, and the day of, and they said they would come to the meeting to make sure that it was passed.
Well. And this ordinance.
The state sent it back to the municipality.
Well, we have to pass the ordinance.
Okay.
And what the ordinance does, I got it back to them. It was the state that used.
It follows the state's guidelines, yeah.
Yeah.
Where is that?
Mine's on page two.
We have no immediate enforcement in the township, that's what makes it difficult.
Yeah, other than the.
There is no patrol and police here.
Right.
And when we call out, um, well, we rarely get a county sheriff, they're all up in an ordinance, you know, so hopefully we get a state.
Well, these state police people told me not to even call the sheriff anymore.
Well, I, I.
They told me to call the state police for Sinclair County, they said they'll be there right away, and they are.
Yeah.
No, I have to call all the time about the shooting, two, three in the morning.
Ford Rashid and Ford Huron.
But now that, we're working on the. Do, like, do they go over to the people's house?
I got it back.
Do they get, like, beat up by, or just, uh, flat on the rest?
Well, they check on their guns, when, most of the time it's a shooting, but the fireworks, they said they're gonna, they're gonna, there's something out now, so I don't know, they said they would be at the meeting.
And, and the.
How do you get, how do you get in church, cause I always, yeah, yeah, because.
In the middle, I mean, in the middle of the night.
Oh, yeah.
And it was in wintertime, and I'm looking, and I'm saying, I'm looking west, and it was, the sky was lit up for, for hours.
I guess what we can do, once this is passed.
Township there is, because I don't know where they can afford all these bullets and all these fireworks that they light up.
What we can do is, once this is passed, I guess, you come in and file a complaint, and we can start sending letters and saying, this is the only time.
Do we know specifically where these fireworks are coming from?
Yeah.
Oh, pretty much, I had, oh, I had no idea.
They have their family reunions for three months, and they light off fireworks, almost every night.
And then we'll put it on.
Their family come in from all different states, they have for three months, and they non-stop shoot the fireworks off.
Something like this, with Mrs. Neilwood zoning, so I would call up Steve and say, hey, Rob, there's a general ordinance.
Like this?
For fireworks, and then.
Alright, alright, then that's what we'll do, we'll send this to our planner.
Okay.
We'll get it, and then we'll get it on our website.
So people, you know, they have no reason to say.
Yeah, have it drawn up, we approve it after July.
So we'll set the perimeter.
Back last year, after the Fourth of July, over on Pontiquet Road, right, or right on Church Road, right before, uh, your house, they left all their things in the middle of the road, those big rocket things, so when you went to town, first thing in the morning, you had to go around their things, cause they left them all out there from partying, oh, that was ridiculous.
Well, one thing I gotta say, um, in defense of Sinclair County Sheriff's Department, I've seen them respond.
Oh, yeah, they do respond, yeah. But they've never, they never contacted me to tell me what, I must've called at least fifteen hundred times already, I'm complaining on the one guy on the corner shooting, cause I got bullets in my trees. Oh, honest to God, I got bullets in my trees.
You shoot right over your head, dude.
Yeah, you don't care, you don't own the land anymore, but you shoot like crazy.
About her neighbor shooting guns, and she's got.
Bullet holes in my trees.
Bullets in my trees.
And had people, oh, for a ransom, and people walking on the yard, and shooting, so the sheriff came out, made them stop shooting, but as soon as the sale was over, they were like, shoot. No respect. And I was also told by another sheriff that you've gotta have at least two acres of land to shoot off a gun. A Sinclair County sheriff told me that.
I laugh when.
I think that's true.
When this firework.
All these pieces of property on, on Pontiquet Road that built all these homes here, they're all two, exactly two acres.
I, I laugh when they legalized fireworks in Michigan, and I knew this was happening, immediately, cause it was wide open, and then the, a lot of people were complaining, so they clamped down, now insurance companies are getting tired of people blowing off figures and putting out eyes, and they're putting pressure on the state.
Well, and the lady, lady, state police lady said she lives in Chesterfield, she said they light them off, and they end up in her stormy pool, and she's gotta go over there and find them, she says that's how stupid people are.
Don't know.
Okay, yeah, folks, you can handle the general ordinance.
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna send this fireworks thing to Steve, and he's gonna just write one up, and we'll pass it at our next meeting, okay? Move me on. Did you hear me, Dan? Okay, okay, next is payment of the bill.
I made a motion to pay the bill to Stevens.
Support. Support by Stevens, I mean, motion by Stevens, support by Stover, all in favor?
Joe?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes?
Patty, yes, Dan, roll call? Yes, last.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so there's some comments?
I'd like to come, make one too, if I may, to be sure, Ashley is doing a wonderful job.
Who?
Miss Ashley. Who? She is on it, I walk in, I walk past. I'm not sure about this one, we need to double-check that one, so she is on her game. We knew she would. She's a wonderful addition to the office.
She must take after her.
Oh, and you take after your mother, so.
So there we go.
Thank you, ask the question?
Sure.
You know how, how the, the turnoff from, uh, Pontiquet Road on the church road is, the grass is so high, you can't see if there's cars coming, they, they don't cut it very often, somebody was saying they're gonna take that out altogether, and put the dirt in, because they dump all their junk in there, does anybody know anything about that?
I don't know why they wouldn't, I mean, I don't even know why that's there.
Is it? It's so high, it's so high right now, you can't see, you can't go around.
Back, back in the day, way before your, my time.
Yeah.
They used to skin logs around there.
Yeah.
Skin logs around.
Yeah, it was Jerry Rito was talking about.
I, there's no reason for it at all.
And they don't scrape it, it's so bad, the holes.
Yeah, yeah.
We used to have one there at Palms in, um, Springboard, on the east side of the road, there used to be one of those, too.
Palms or Springboard?
Yeah, but they closed that off back in the eighties, um, yeah, they, we asked about it, and, uh, you know, it's just not a, that's a county road, it's just, or road commission's not a priority, they got other stuff.
Well, I know Jerry Rito puts the, the, the things out there, so they don't tear up his section that he cuts the grass for.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the kids tear it up with their four-wheeler, so they don't care.
Anything else?
I've always wondered why that was.
Dan, did you say you had one more comment?
Hey, Joe, just, just a quick comment here.
Guys, go ahead.
When Ashley and Jennifer, in their sincerely, for letting me, you know, participate with you, and also I hope that, I hope that is shared at home, and I hope my dad is, my dad is.
I'll repeat it.